Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Charlie Collins. I live at thirty-two twenty-five Piper Glen here in Fayetteville. And I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment that Alderman Tennant put forward to put this on a general election vote in November. And I'm here to speak in favor of it for two main reasons. Number one, what that amendment would do for us, and then number two, what the alternatives would be. When I spoke against the ordinance last time, I was very concerned about the impact on businesses in Fayetteville. Since then, I've had a chance to talk to several large business owners, and I'm more concerned now than I was then about the chilling effect this will have on employment in our city. Here's why Alderman Tennant's amendment is so helpful to us. Number one, it gives the people a chance to say we are for this approach, or we're not for this approach. And so regardless of which side of the issue any one of us sits, there will be a clear, resounding answer from the people of Fayetteville in a general election where we would expect a decent turnout of people. The reason this is such a positive is there are other lawmaking entities, there are other people watching, and if the citizens of the city come out in favor of this, it will say quite a bit. If the citizens of the city come out not in favor of it, it will say something different, which could be, we need to make these tweaks, we need to make these changes to have something that everybody can feel good about. Because I know I'm against discrimination. I believe each one of you is against discrimination. My personal opinion is that virtually everybody in this room and outside is also against discrimination. That's really not the issue. The issue is, how do we move forward, and how do we make sure that the good things of Fayetteville can happen the way they have in the past? Therefore, I think the amendment really helps us do that. If we don't have the amendment, it's very likely there will still be an election. It will be much more expensive for the city, it will be much more involve people acting to get signatures and other things, and at the end of the day, a special election rarely turns out anywhere near the numbers of people that a general election does. And as somebody who has been accused many, 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 many times of trying to sneak things through, hide things, put it under the radar, not be transparent, and trust me, I've been accused of all those things because in the legislature, we're allowed to put out three constitutional amendments in each session. That means everybody doesn't get what they want, that means the constitutional amendments are more confusing than people would like, and so there's all kinds of concern that we're not being transparent. I would submit to you that this amendment offered by Alderman Tennant makes it very clear and straightforward that this body has that opportunity to do it in the most cost-effective, best way to get a solid, strong answer for the future of Fayetteville, and I would strongly encourage the council to support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I promise to be brief, be bright, and be gone. I'm John Miller. I live at fourteen sixty-two North Dawn Drive in Fayetteville. I'm a twenty-eight-year-old Fayetteville resident. I'm married, and I just want to speak on Amendment Two. As I read the amendment dealing with the segregation of areas such as locker rooms, restrooms, for gender reasons, men, women, all I know is that I'm a male, and I know it goes through the male mind, and if men are given the ability to perceive their gender differently on a given day, so that they're allowed to enter a women's restroom or locker room, and then see women undressing, men will do that. That's why pornography is one of the top grossing businesses in our nation. And so when I think to that amendment, I look at the amendment, and it says that it does not allow those to enter the opposite sex areas, locker room, bathroom, it says for unlawful purposes. But no man doing that up front is going to say he's going for an unlawful purpose. He will hide that, he will lie, and there's going to be rapes and potentially worse murder. And so I ask you to defend our women and our children's safety and their freedom, and when I look at that amendment, it says to not for any unlawful purpose. I ask you to remove the word unlawful and say that a man or woman cannot enter an area designated for the opposite sex for any reason. I ask you to protect their safety and the freedom of our women and our children. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natasha Miller. I live at fourteen sixty-two North Dawn Drive, Fayetteville, Arkansas, and I want to speak against Amendment Two, basically for the exact same reasons that he just said. I do not think that any man is going to say that he's going to go in and rape a woman or a child, and so I say that that should be a vote of against. And I'd also like to say that I'm for Amendment Three. I don't think that the crowd tonight should determine the future of Fayetteville. We have many women and children here that I think need to be protected, and I'm a preschool teacher. I look out for the well-being of other people's children, and to know that they could be in danger, because I work at a private school, that they could be in danger by somebody coming into the bathroom, and so I think that this should go to a public vote and let the public decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony McCaskill. I reside at seven-three-zero West Van Gogh Place. I'm here to speak exclusively and explicitly against Amendment Three. I feel it would open up too much opportunity for the politics of fear, and especially the money behind the politics of fear, to overcome what is a genuine opportunity for this city to be a shining city on a hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jerry Patton. I live at five-twenty-four North Shady Avenue here in Fayetteville. Lived here my whole life. On the amendments, I'm totally in favor of Amendment Three, a vote of the people. I'm totally against Amendment One and Amendment Two. I think they're both poorly written. I don't think they address the serious need that we have in either one of the amendments. I'd rather see Amendment One and Amendment Two eliminated. I'd rather see the vote based upon the original draft of the ordinance put before the voters. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Embry, nineteen-ten North Juneway Terrace. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on these amendments. I heard the argument that we should not pass Amendment Three because it would be expensive. I would answer this claim by saying that ethical action should not be avoided in deference to expense. I know that it would be cheaper to feed dog food to my wife and soon-to-be-born daughter, but because I want to best serve and care for them, I choose to give them the best food that I can afford. We live in one of the most economically vibrant communities in our great country. If we wish to serve and care for our minority populations, the cost of doing the right thing is secondary to protecting them. In regards to arguments with the Second Amendment, I heard over and over again that somehow we are increasing the danger to our children and our women because of increased access for criminals to bathrooms and changing rooms. I would argue that there are many, even in this room tonight, who at one time or another snuck into a bathroom of the opposite gender. Bathrooms are inherently low-security areas. Unless we start positioning security personnel outside of bathrooms and changing rooms, there is no reasonable expectation that this is going to be monitored seriously. In regards to the increased risk of child molestation, if you look at the facts, child molestation is usually committed by people who are already close to the child and rarely from strangers. A nineteen-ninety-four study found that seventy to ninety percent of reported perpetrators were already acquaintances with their victim. Molestation is usually a lengthy process of grooming. The Mayo Clinic published a study in two thousand nine that found that generally pedophiles do not use force to have children engage in these activities, but instead rely on various forms of psychic manipulation and desensitization. In reality, violent molestation does not typically occur in bathrooms or changing rooms. A nineteen-ninety-one survey of prisoners found that seventy-five percent of the violent victimizations of children took place in either the victim's home or the offender's home. Yes, it's scary to think of molestation in bathrooms and changing rooms, but the data shows that this is statistically unlikely. And if we're still concerned that this is a fear to lose sleep over, keep in mind that out of almost seventy-seven thousand Fayetteville residents, only twenty-four are registered sex offenders. I contend that the best defense against child molesters is for loving parents and communities to keep an eye on their children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Daniels, and I live in Ward Four. And, Ms. Mayor, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to vote, to vote, I would like to speak against Amendment Three. This is a municipal issue, a city of Fayetteville issue. It is not an issue that we should wait until November, where we are going to have undue influence by many individuals, many lobbying groups coming in here. We already have a large number of people who are not a part of Fayetteville in the audience tonight. I have never heard so much discussion as in the last twenty-four hours about the national lobbyist group that used a local reality person to make robocalls to everyone, and that's-
Donna, stay with the amendments, please.
And that, and I feel that if we continue down the road towards deciding this at the election, then we will have more of that undue influence. You're hearing from the people of Fayetteville. People have been emailing and calling. They're all the people. That's where it needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
My name is John Treet. I live at seven-hundred West Cleveland Street in Ward Two, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity to speak against Amendment Three. I'm a fifth-generation Arkansan. Growing up, I remember what it was like to be called every name in the book for being gay. I remember what it was like to have my tires slashed, to have a boss say that she was glad she didn't have any fags working in her store. When I graduated from college, I left the state, and a lot of young people do that. And I spent the next twenty years in cities that all had civil rights legislation. I'm very sad to be coming back here tonight in the city that has always prided itself on being Arkansas's most progressive city, to think that this legislation is just now being discussed, and that it's somehow controversial, or that it may need to be pushed back or the buck be passed to the next election. Councilman, Mr. Mayor, this is not about making a prophetic statement for civil rights. In two thousand fourteen, passing this resolution is simply keeping a fig leaf of credibility for the progressive reputation this city has prided itself for so long. Please pass this amendment now. Thank you.
I feel like I can't top that, but I'll try. My name's Olivia Trimble. I live here in Fayetteville, twenty-three-eleven South Cameron Circle, down on the south side, and I'm a mom. I'm heavily involved with my daughter's school, and I'm also a sign gainer here in town. I think we need to talk about Amendment Number Two. Hard to articulate this, but I feel like, terrible, I'm freezing up, I feel like we should have more faith in our citizens, that if we, that we should have more faith in our citizens to do what's right, and to not be entering bathrooms to molest children. We should have more faith in the men in our world to not just run wild raping people if they're allowed to go in the restroom. So I feel, I need to say that, so there you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joanne Cavami. I live at nineteen-eighty-two Greenview Drive, and I'm not sure if I'm still in Ward One, or they moved me to Ward Three, but I'm somewhere in there. And I would like to respectfully ask that you vote no on Amendment Three. It never seems like a good policy for the majority to vote on minority rights. It never works out well, and I think you all are good people, and I think you'll do the right thing and vote this amendment. Vote for civil rights for everyone in our community. Thank you.
And Joanne, we will be talking about the ordinance as a whole right now.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Evening. My name is Robin Riggins. I live at eight-eight-eight West Lawson Street, and I want to thank you all for being here and listening to us. I just wanted to ask you to vote no on Amendment Three, because the fact that several people were afraid to give their addresses is a bit disconcerting, and I think that definitely shows like how, how this isn't a very important issue, and waiting until November, I don't think is a very good idea. And civil rights are human rights, and it should be a given, so if you all could, you know, stand up for our rights, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Haas. I live at twenty-seven eighty-six Boardwalk Court here in Fayetteville. My wife and I have been a resident for very many years. We have children in the Fayetteville School District. We are very active members in the community, member of the Fayetteville Rotary Club, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. We're highly invested here in Fayetteville, and as I look at this ordinance, I believe that it should go to the will of the people, and I would like to encourage you guys, ladies and gentlemen, to allow the citizens of Fayetteville to make this decision, not simply allowing it to be a council decision, although you guys are the elected representatives of the city of Fayetteville. But I would like to spare the city the cost of a special election, which I think is a very real possibility, that may come as a result, if this is passed tonight, that it may go to a ballot to be put on, and the expense of all of that. I just believe that from a responsible use of our time and of your vote, to vote for Amendment Three, to send this to the general election, where the citizens of Fayetteville will be turning out anyway to vote. Special elections generally do not garner very many people in a turnout, and so in this year, to send it to the general election, I think would be the most responsible thing. In that way, those of us that live here in Fayetteville, residents, will have our ability to vote for or against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justine Turnage. I am an eight-year resident of Fayetteville. I am transgender. I am a woman, and I have never been happier about the existence of bathroom stalls and privacy curtains. I can walk in, do my business, not raise any alarm, walk out. Arguably speaking, if I were to try to do the same in a men's bathroom, I think I would get a little bit of a different response. So if we wanted to discuss raising alarm, there we have it. With regards to, I believe it was the First Amendment that addressed the religious property, I'm in support of that. That is their space. But I think one thing that does need to be remembered is that while they are guaranteed their right to religion, I'm also guaranteed my right not to their religion. And so off of their spaces, outside of where they have a permit to display such, I should not have to abide by their rules. With regards to Amendment Three, we're discussing rights, not privileges. The fact that we're here tonight demonstrates that the majority has not provided to our needs, has not given us the ability to exist comfortably the same as they do. So to be in a rush to defer it back to the majority is just, I'm sorry, but it seems absurd to me. If it's worth twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars in tax money to make sure that I'm still fearful every day, I can't stop that. But I see no reason to just hand it over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think I am, so.
There's no more residents.
I understand. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Anita Schnee, and I think I must live three hundred feet east of Ward Three, the Ward Three boundary. I am an attorney. I consider myself living in Fayetteville, when working in Fayetteville. With the greatest of respect, I rise to oppose Amendment Three. And I just concur in what my legal colleague from the law school said in every respect. I just want to add two points. First of all, when I was researching this issue before I came tonight, I came across an article that emphasized something that the founding father, James Madison, said about how much he feared the tyranny of the majority when it comes to the matter of minority rights. In fact, whether we suffer that here in Fayetteville, or whether we don't, the fact is that our form of government insists that where minority rights are concerned, in Madison's language, they must not be decided by ruling from passion or in the violence of faction. We may live in an enlightened town, but we must respect what James Madison said about our form of government. Now, it may well be, if the body does not pass the ordinance, I'm sorry, if the body decides to pass the entire ordinance tonight, it will willy-nilly go to a general vote. I wanted to offer you one fact, though, that I found in my research, and that is that of the fifty-five municipalities that have passed ordinances very like this one, where the ballot initiative did succeed and the matter went to referendum, forty-nine of the city councils reenacted the same ordinance against the will of the people. I hesitate to stand here and represent something that looks so anti-democratic, but as my colleague from the law school has emphasized, matters of minority rights should not be submitted to the will of the general public. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Olivia Suzanne Demille. I'm not a resident of Fayetteville, but I'm a small business owner and a student.
Ma'am, we're going to take the residents of Fayetteville first.
They're done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So everybody now is non-residents, right? Good? Sorry, I apologize.
Is the lady a resident?
Yes, I am.
Resident?
Okay. Let me clarify, hang on, everybody, just a minute. How many residents is in the room that wants to speak on the amendments that have not gotten this chance to speak yet, or wants to speak? Not the ordinance, we're fixing to get, we're going to go through the amendments first. Has everybody that's a resident of the city gotten to speak on the amendments that wants to? Okay, here we go. Do you want to speak on, please? Every resident that wants to speak on the amendments, you need to queue up, because I'm fixing to close it off to the residents and take folks that don't live here, all right? Okay, here we go.
Yes, sir. I'm Lance Brewer, resident of Fayetteville. I live at three-zero-five-four East Stone Mountain Drive and Ward Number One, and I thank you all for hearing us this evening. I think as evidence of the crowd that continues to want to stand up here and have their voice heard, that as in accordance with the amendment made concerning Amendment Three, I think we ought to have the voice to be able to hear that. I really appreciate you all, actually, I don't know if you're taking tally marks or what, but we're observing that. We continue to come up here, want our voice to be heard. I believe the good people of Fayetteville, this place, this community can make the decision to do that. They can rise up, maybe do it differently than what's been done past. We do enough other things differently that we can do this differently and vote well for this, so appreciate you all hearing us this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is LaCount Reber, and I do live in Fayetteville.
I'm having some difficulty.
My name is LaCount Reber. I live in Fayetteville, three-one-four-zero North Melinda Drive in Ward Three. I just want to thank you for the time this evening. I'm a little concerned, greatly concerned. I do appreciate the rights and liberties that are both perceived and real on both sides of this issue. I think that hatred has no place in, and shouldn't have a place in our lives, but in reality, it does, and I think hate can come in any color, it can come in any form, it can come from both sides on the issue. And I'm specifically addressing this Amendment Three here, the public vote, that I'm concerned for one, two, and three, the bathroom safety issue, the church property issue, and the public vote. I'm concerned the way this whole thing has been handled. I think it's been handled, for the most part, not well at all. I think as citizens, as citizens of the city, I think it's important for this, something of this magnitude to be discussed, and I think it should have been handled, perhaps in a different venue to give more people access. And so I think that, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed by the city council, to tell you the truth. As far as the church property is concerned, the church is not a building. The church is not a tax-exempt piece of private church. It's made up of individuals. And what I'm sensing here in this amendment is that it's okay for you to believe what you want to, as long as behind your doors of your church, on your church property, but you don't have the right and liberty to have, to express your faith outside the four walls of your church. I think that's fundamentally flawed. So I don't think you have the basis really to make that argument at all, based upon the Constitution of the United States, the First Amendment. So I think that argument is absolutely flawed. I think that as far as the bathroom safety goes, I think that there's a fundamental issue here that is, I think we're all aware of, and that is the inherent nature of humans, and that is we have sinful nature. And as a believer, I think that it is common sense to me, and as a man, to understand that, that will be abused, and that will be violated, and it has been shown several cases here. And I don't think we need those cases to understand that this is really an attack, and I think it violates the liberties and freedoms of children and women. But that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Clay Morton. I live at two-nine-one-nine Dorothy Jean Lane in Fayetteville, and I want to specifically talk about what Mr. Justin put forward. I think it'd be wise to send this to a vote. I don't think that, I think it's divisive in a lot of ways, and I think it makes sense to let the people vote, and then that makes, that takes a lot of pressure off you guys, and you guys are kind of in a tough spot here, and so it seems like it makes more sense to send it to a general vote. I think in general in Fayetteville, that, as a business owner in Fayetteville, that I think many people are, obviously, this has just caused a lot of tension, and so you guys have experienced it. So again, I would just say, and urge you to send it to a vote in November. Thanks for your time. Appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Once again, Olivia Suzanne Demille. I'm a business owner, a student, and a teacher at the University of Arkansas. So while I'm not a resident of Fayetteville, the things that go on in Fayetteville greatly affect my life, as I spend probably ninety percent of my time here between my business and my job and my classes. I wanted to go ahead and address Amendment Three first. I think that Amendment Three is a very bad idea for many reasons. Most of this has already been brought up with the civil liberties issues, but beyond that, this is a university campus. We have an extremely large population of people that are here, that are not residents, that cannot vote, but are very much affected by the laws that go on here, and so holding off on these issues when they can't even vote is something that I think should not go to the general public. We have a lot of minorities that come in through the university. We have a lot of LGBT people that come in through the university that are not actually residents of the city, and therefore would have no representation. You are their only representation. You are the only ones that can protect them, and you are the only ones that can actually make sure that they are protected when they- make sure that they are protected when they come to this city, putting their faith in us to get their education. As for Amendments One and Amendments Two, I find that Amendment One is good in the way that it's written. I find it a little bit odd that we did have to include the language for public spaces, anything that's given as public, because according to tax code, if it's given by public money, then it is a public space, not a private space, not a religious space. So, reemphasizing that is, I think, excessive, but if necessary, then so be it. As for Amendment... Thank you. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous, and that was my phone going off. As for Amendment Two, as a mother of two and as a transgender woman, I'd like to address the fact that I have never walked into a restroom and seen any women running around naked. It's not something that happens, so I don't know where that misconception is coming from, that anybody walking into the restroom doing that would be seen as natural. I think that would automatically flag people to say, hey, something odd is going on here. Maybe we need to report this to somebody. Beyond that, as a mother, I never let my children go into the bathroom unsupervised. I don't care which restroom they're going into, and I don't care if my son wanted to go into the men's restroom, and I had to follow him in there. I would, and nobody would stop me, because I'm not going to let that happen. I'm not going to let him be around strangers if I have any fear at all that there might be something odd going on. So, once again, the worry that a transgender woman is going to walk into a restroom and then try to molest a child means that either, well, I won't get into that, that was going to be a little more bellicous than I wanted, but effectively, it's ludicrous. I've never seen an issue with it, but I have seen issues of people putting themselves at health risks, because they will stay in an area where they're unable to safely use either restroom, because they fear, excuse me, fear persecution for using the proper restroom, and fear violence for using the improper restroom. Take that however you want. So, I would like to say that I oppose the need for Amendment Two, but understand people's desire to have it. I oppose Amendment Three completely, and I support Amendment One, though, once again, I see it as unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mason Hayes, and I live at four zero four three North Cadillac Drive, Number Three. And I would just like to say that I agree that this should go to an election by the people. I agree with what Mr. Tennant has said, that people need a finalized document that they can look at and kind of go through and go to vote. And these meetings are great. You guys are doing an awesome job, but there's so much being tossed around here. I just don't know how we can come to an organized vote at the end. I also don't think it's fair for you guys, ultimately, it comes down to your voting either for or against something called an anti-discrimination ordinance. And I don't think that there are other things, there are other things in the ordinance, even if you're not someone that considers yourself someone that would discriminate, there are things in the ordinance you could be against, and so, just kind of paint you that out.
Stay with the amendments. We're going to have other comments on the ordinance.
Yes, that, okay.
You're very welcome.
Good evening. My name is Joe Priest. I live at two five one eight North Sheffield Place. I was just going to comment, I believe, given all the attendance here, that we should, I'd be in favor of Amendment Three, to send this to a referendum vote and let the people decide their conscience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Pascal. I live at eighteen five eighteen Duncan Road, Fayetteville, Arkansas. As for the Amendment One, I do not think it goes far enough. We have to remember that our religion does not end at the church property. We have a freedom of religion guaranteed by the Constitution in the United States, and it's within the borders of those United States, not limited to our properties, as was spoken to before. We should be able to go out in public. As a minister, I should be able to have the right, based off my religious beliefs, to determine who I will and will not marry, who I will perform funerals for and such things. This amendment does not protect business owners, Christian business owners, or religious, any religion. I know we talk a lot about Christianity, but there are several religions that oppose this lifestyle in their belief system, and to force religions in general to practice their religion only within the confines of their property is very disturbing to me. Also, as to Amendment Two, I think that men are men and women are women. Now, how you feel...
Okay.
How you feel about yourself is your personal choice. How you look at yourself is your personal choice. And as to Mr. David Garcia's comment last week, when you walk into a stall, you can shut the door behind you and no one knows. So, what difference does it make if we allow...
Don't bring in any member of the public that's part of the...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was just referencing, because it was a statement that he had said before. Okay, my apologies. That we can walk in and we can shut the door, and we can have our privacy there. Now, men's bathrooms are somewhat a little bit different, and sometimes the urinals are sitting next to each other without dividers. There are several in the public that do that. Also, as far as private schools, because this exempts public schools, including the universities, so I'm not sure how this amendment will affect the university and those students there. And I have a son who's starting there as a freshman this year, so I'm not sure how this will affect that. As to Amendment Three, I would love to see this come to the vote of the people. We are a government for the people, by the people. As to the argument of the minority, the truth of the matter is, I love apple pie. And I could ask you to pass an amendment for apple pie. Now, that might not be a minority. But nevertheless, the idea that the majority are going to intimidate the minority, I don't see that in Fayetteville. I've lived here all my life. I have a stepbrother who's a homosexual. He does not speak to me that way. He has lived here in Fayetteville. He has owned a home here in Fayetteville without any fear. So, I would, I have, and I have several friends who are that way. I have people who have stepped into my church and sat in my pulpit, or sat in my pulpit, but sat in my congregation, a homosexual couple. And they have never expressed a fear. So, I think that it's something that needs to come to the vote of the people. It should come to the vote of the people. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Catherine Orsberg. I'm from one six nine zero two Bethlehem Road in Winslow. I have...
I'm having some difficulty hearing you.
My husband and I own a business in Fayetteville. And my question is about the First Amendment. Does that, it says all religious property is exempt. What I'm wondering is, if people who do not belong to the church come and use the property for various other things, are they then... If they use it for nonreligious purposes, like we bring kids in to our school, all right? They don't belong to our church. They don't belong to members in our church, but they're coming to our school, all right? Does that make us then non-exempt? That's a question.
I'm not sure. Kit, do you have...
No, I don't think that would affect your meeting space or anything like that. The only thing, the only caveat or the only thing that could affect the church's meeting space would be if, in fact, you were receiving state or federal or local funds, tax dollars, in order to do an event or something, if you wanted to do a feeding or some other sort of outreach, and you receive state funds or federal funds, tax dollars, then that, at that point, for that particular event, you would not be able to discriminate then. But apart from that, I think you would be, remain exempt. And I'll ask Alderman Petty, who actually worked on this language with some other individuals, if that's correct in his understanding.
I think the city attorney did a fine job of explaining that, as our understanding, we have the same understanding of the law.
All right. That brings me to my second question. Our church does have a Christian school, and our Christian school is accredited by the state. And we have lunch programs, and so, I'm assuming we do get government money. Does that open our whole school up to a non-exempt status?
I would think if you're receiving state money for that, then I would think that that particular part of your church, the school part, if you want to accept state money, tax dollars, then you would not be exempt from this ordinance.
Okay. Well, could that be exempted? Because, I mean, obviously, we do pay taxes as Christians, and we educate our kids just like everybody else. Our taxes also go to the public schools, I might add. And therefore, I find that totally unfair and very discriminative against me as a Christian, against my kids, and what we believe. Furthermore, I can't go out into the community in my job. According to that First Amendment there, I can't, I'm not understanding why certain people should have every right everywhere, and ours should be so limited. And I also don't understand, these people who want this ordinance, they have the exact same civil rights that I have across the board. They have the same rights. Why don't we just enforce their rights like you would enforce my rights, or I would hope, or anybody else's? Why are we having to add special things, give them special exemptions and special privileges, and as far as public...
Ma'am, I'd like you to stay with the amendments right now.
Okay.
Please. And I believe this is being brought forward because there's supposedly some unprotected classes in the United States that are covered under the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I was trying to stay with it, and just in pointing out that Christians do not, we just have this little tax exempt area, and we're out there like everybody else. So, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, ma'am.
Ma'am.
I have a question that involves your question and Kit's response. The amendment says that nothing in this chapter shall be constructed to require any religious or denominational institution or association to open its tax exempt property or place of worship to any individual or group for any ceremony or meeting, except for any activity or service that is supported in whole or part by public funds. So, your question was specifically about the lunch program. That was what you thought would receive public funds.
That was one of the programs we get funds for.
So, just taking that as an example, Kit, would that not fall under the part that said, except for any activity or service that is supported in whole or part by public funds? In that case, if it were just a lunch program, would that not mean that just the lunch program would not be exempted?
Well, if they restricted who could attend their school and participate in the lunch program, then I think that would probably not be allowed under this, if they, because then they would be taking taxpayer funds and saying that if you don't pass their religious test, then they could, maybe you could not participate in that lunch program, because you could not be at their school.
Okay. Well, maybe that's a bad example, but maybe it's the safe driving classes that some private schools may offer. Would that be an example of the one section that the private school would have to follow, if they received federal money for...
It's only the activity that is supported by tax funds.
Right. So, it is just that one section?
Okay. Well, those are two areas. Our school has other funding for different things. I'm not really sure. But it certainly looks like it needs to be addressed further and, you know, set to me.
I just wanted to make that more clear for you.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob Ballinger, I'm state representative for the eastern part of Washington County. I attend church at Mission Boulevard Baptist Church. And my church also has Fayetteville Christian School, so we have a school that runs under those same things. And I think that what you'd run into, kind of addressing Alderman Long's issue, is the nature of school is its enrollment. So, if you enroll in the school, and therefore you can take part in the safe driving program, or if you enroll in the school, so therefore you're going to take part in the lunch program, and those are receiving federal funds, just like any other school would, then you would essentially, we'd be in violation of this ordinance, because of the fact that you aren't participating in those programs unless you're enrolled in the school. And so, if the school had some sort of religious test, because it's a religious school, then we would be put in a position where we'd be automatically in violation of this ordinance. And, you know, it's two hundred and fifty students. We have a volunteer staff of probably a hundred people that come in and help at different times. And they would all be put into a position where they'd be in violation under the law because of this. And so, that's what I wanted to address, is Amendment One and Amendment Two. But in Amendment One, if really what your intent is, is to exempt churches, then why wouldn't you, and this would be my suggestion, and frankly, I think it's pretty telling the reason why you didn't, not you collectively, but individuals, didn't exempt, put churches under the exempt status, is maybe you don't really want churches exempt. If you do want churches exempt, then why wouldn't you just exempt churches altogether? And that would be an easier, a cleaner cut. We wouldn't be talking about what parts is tax exempt on the property, what parts are. If it's rental property, then what part are they using? What are they not using? So, if you exempted churches and their activities from this statute, then, you know, truly, these people would have the opportunity, while the individual would still be, lack the ability to practice their religion, which violates the First Amendment, which violates the Constitution, which is, we'll get to that later. But at least you could actually, with a clear conscience, say, we really don't want to mess with churches. We really like churches, let them do the thing. Move them to the exemption and let them be exempt. So, that would be Amendment One. Amendment Two, with all due respect to the work that Alderman Petty put into it, the reality is, they really don't do anything, because how you define gender is, means actual or perceived sex. The way you design, define gender identity is the same way. It's a matter of perception. So, we're not talking about any, I mean, you can say that an individual of opposite gender can't use the gender segregated restrooms, but then you define gender to include a perception of gender. And I think that you see what we ran into, and the city attorney, Mr. Kit, you've done a great job of trying here to make this work. But you have a great example of you saying, well, you know, if a male were to go into a female's bathroom, then it would be disruptive, and so, you could, there'd be a violation of state law. And you're right. State law does trump over city ordinance. But then you also have individuals who said, well, I use those female bathrooms, or female bathrooms all the time, and that's not a problem. So, to me, it just seems like, you know, letting the property owners, the stores, the restaurants, the schools, the hospitals, the people who own the building, let them make the decision as far as how they're going to treat the restaurants. And so, if you're, if you are going to make these amendments really have any real teeth, then you're going to have to redefine what gender is and gender identity to lose the perception. Because as it is now, it's amorphous. It's up to what a person perceives as their gender at any moment, and I don't know how you would handle that and how you would define that. So, those are just a couple of suggestions that I'd have. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Long.
I just had one comment. You mentioned that in the scenario that we were talking about before with the private schools and the safe driving program, for example, how it's all about enrollment, and if you don't go to that school, you don't participate in that safe driving program. Unless laws have changed in the last fifteen years regarding that, that's not really accurate, because I did go to one school and tend to a safe driving class at a different school. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, that could be, that could be an exemption still for those schools.
And in the question, what I would say is, is under Arkansas law, in order for you to attend any kind of extracurricular activities, or even any individual class, you have to attend school, I think, at least eighty percent of the time, even to participate it. Now, if there is a program that's not offered in one school, you have the ability to take that, and that may be what you did in your school.
Right.
If that program's not offered, you could go to another school and take that program. But in this case, if it is offered, you can't. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Steve Fowler, four seven four six Maple Grove Drive, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I'm in line with the last figure there. I appreciate the gesture of Amendment One. But to try to take the constitutional right that's there in state and federal laws, and then define it down into a geographic or property description, just doesn't seem right. And I think there's a lot of motions on this, both sides. And for it to be decided in town of seventy-five thousand people, about five people, I think it needs to go to a vote and let the people decide. I think that's the only fair way to do that. And just have the debate over the next couple of months, that it all be heard. I mean, there's still people today I've talked to that didn't know this even existed. So, I mean, I know there's been some advertising of it, and there's been on the news, but you'd be surprised how many people, even today, probably still don't know this is out there. And I don't know why it has to be fast-tracked. I think it needs to be voted... Uh, I think it needs to be voted on by the people and let them express their opinion, and that's what it's all about. I appreciate each of you and your service and, uh, letting everybody speak tonight. And thank you for that.
Anybody else? Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kima, uh, Kima Wright.
Could I get you to pull that mic down just a little bit?
Okay.
There we go.
And I get really nervous when I do public speaking, so-
Me too.
But, I just wanted to say, you know, if this is the city of Fayetteville, you know, and this ordinance is actually about every people group just about, why not let every people group vote, you know? It just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem, uh, it doesn't seem fair, you know? It feels like discrimination in itself, you know, to not allow the people, we the people of the United, you know, not just of the United States here, it's of Fayetteville, Arkansas, you know, to, um, exercise their, their freedom of, uh, of speech, even if they're nervous, like me. Um, it just doesn't seem right to me to exclude, uh, people in the city, basically. Um, because, you know, we all have, we all come from different backgrounds, we all have different opinions and views, but to me, it feels like we should be able to pull together and be able to say, you know, what the majority wants rather than just the minority. It doesn't make sense, you know, to, to make any law based on the minority. And I hear what people are saying when they talk about civil rights and stuff like that, but this isn't just about one people group. This isn't just about LBGt people. This is about, uh, you know, every people group. So, every people group should be able to come together as a city and vote on it. I mean, so that's all I had to say.
Okay. Anybody else?
My name is Randy Alexander. I'm a state representative and part of my district includes part of Fayetteville. I support Amendment Three for all the reasons that you've heard. Amendment One and Two, uh, I honestly believe Mr. Petty made a good faith effort here to bridge the gap, and I commend you for that. I, I believe you're sincere about that, and I appreciate that. But I don't think it, I don't think it solves the problem. Amendment One has been talked about a lot, so I'm not going to talk about that again. But my problem is, we're, even with the amendments, I think we still have a problem with the, the definition section of the ordinance. You know, we've got, we've got a statement here that says, "Gender means actual or perceived sex." And we talked about, uh, the phrase that ended "for any unlawful purpose." Well, I don't think going to the bathroom in and of itself is unlawful. And I don't see how you can reconcile the definitions that we have here with, uh, someone using, using a restroom that is, is for a different gender. Now, you know, one of the things here that I, I just can't get past, and, and maybe if I can give a short story, something in my experience, I was a director of housing for thirty-five years at different universities. And when you work in campus housing with students in dormitories, you pretty much see it all. You, you get to the point pretty quickly where you're not surprised by much of anything. And if you ever think you are going to say you've seen it all and, uh, within the next week, something's going to prove you wrong. In the eighties, when I worked at an institution in Kansas, I got a call after midnight from one of my staff saying I needed to come down to the campus because one of our students had been arrested. When I asked for clarification, they said, "Well, earlier today, this person was on their floor telling the people that lived on their floor that they had been conducting experiments to turn themselves into an animal." And then apparently later that evening around ten o'clock, he went into one of the local grocery stores, was standing in the frozen food aisle and on all fours barking at people. Uh, this resulted in the police being called. He reported to the police that he sincerely believed he was a dog, so they arrested him. And that night, I got to call this young man's mother, who lived in Oklahoma, and tell her that she needed to come and pick up her son because he thought he was a dog. Now, he went home for a few days and he got some professional help. He came back the next week where a disciplinary, uh, hearing was held by my boss, the dean of students, and the dean of students suspended him from school for a period of a year. And he checked out of the hall and went home. I told the bo, I told my boss I thought that was a very harsh decision, and he was surprised at that and inquired as to why, and I got to remind him that that's seven years in a dog's life. But, the point is, this young man may have sincerely perceived himself to be a canine, but you know what? He wasn't. He's a homo sapien. He's a young man. I'm not questioning at all that some folks in this community might genuinely perceive themselves to be a different gender. And based on the definition that we have here, we seem to accept that. We talk about, uh, uh, different from that traditionally associated with the sex assigned to that individual at birth. I was fortunate to be present at the birth of both of my children, and that was back before sonograms, uh, were routine, and we didn't know until the baby was born what we had. When my first child was born, the doctor said, "It's a boy." Nobody in the room seemed surprised by that? Nobody argued about it. When my second child was born, the doctor said, "It's a girl." Same thing. He didn't look to us and say, "What do you think? Did you want a little brother for Clint?" He didn't do that. He didn't do that because it was what I think our founders would call a self-evident truth.
All right.
And I guess what I want to say is, just because we perceive something, doesn't mean it's true. My father and my father-in-law both had Alzheimer's. My father's personality changed completely, and he would say things that were incorrect. I didn't correct him. And when I interact with a person who's transgender or LGBt, the fact that I disagree with them, I have no desire to argue with them or embarrass them, you know? One of the things that we all like about Fayetteville, and although I don't live here, I worked here for many years, we have a community that is far more diverse than most of the communities in the state of Arkansas, a lot of the communities in the country. And yet, we get along. That's what attracts us to this place. I have no desire to fight with anybody. I think we can peacefully coexist. But when you reach the point where you start pushing back against me, based on a definition like this, I have to push back. You know, as a legislature, a legislator for the past year and a half, I've learned a lot about bills and statutes and ordinances, and there's some principles involved in writing good ones. And I would say, in the last two weeks, I've come up with another one. And that is this. If you want to pass an ordinance, and the logic and the intellectual analysis, the intellectual structure of what you want to pass can only hold together by the suspension of reality, if we have to engage in make-believe, maybe that's not a good ordinance. My father-in-law thought he played quarterback for Oklahoma University-
Stay with the amendments, Mr. Alexander, please.
I am.
Okay.
And, and for the Dallas Cowboys. He didn't. We didn't argue with him about that. But when we get to something like this, I think we need to stop and say, "If someone honestly believes that they're a different gender than what they were born, okay, they can believe that." But when we start putting it into law, that we have to recognize, we have to recognize that perception and treat it as if it were true, we've gone too far. And I would encourage you to put this vote to the people of Fayetteville.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there are, um, people that need to go to the bathroom, and they're not able to leave to the, go to the bathroom and then come back in the room, and we've been here for so long.
We have been here a long time, haven't we?
Yeah. I would humbly request that you allow people, if they need to go to the bathroom, to go ahead and go, but they-
Well, certainly, if anyone needs to use the bathroom, I don't want to prohibit you from using the bathroom. I may be strict, but I'm not that strict. Okay, let's do it this way. Can we go one at a time? Okay. Yeah, gee, I never thought I'd have to deal with this. Okay. All right. All right. All right. All right. I, I really don't know what to tell you all. If, you know, if you have to leave the room, you have to leave the room, but I can't guarantee you your seats will be here.
One at a time works for me.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's proceed then, and you may go one at a time.
Uh, we're still talking about amendments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll, I'll make it quick. Carrie Phelan Maxwell, Fayetteville citizen. I, I live in Fayetteville. Uh, in the first paragraph, and I'll make, this is quick, in the first paragraph of the ordinance, we're, uh, first paragraph, states purpose, uh, in, uh, one, two, three places, it says, "Of all persons, all persons, all persons." So, why not something as important as this and wide-ranging and far-reaching, why not let the citizens vote? That's, you know, just let the citizens vote on it. Um, that's all I wanted to say on amendments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Clark. I live at seventeen thirty-two North Appleberry Place in Fayetteville, I'm resident of Ward Three. Uh, I wanted to speak in opposition to Amendment Number Three. I think it would be folly to allow minority rights to be decided by a majority vote. Furthermore, we have just this week seen a campaign of misinformation and fear.
Please don't use the term.
I apologize.
Earmonger.
We have seen a campaign funded by outside money interests creep into our community, uh, postponing anything until November would just serve to invite more of the same. Uh, I hope the council will, uh, join me in opposition of Amendment Three. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sasha Cannon. I live here in Fayetteville. Um, I live at twenty twenty North Leverett Avenue. Although I sincerely appreciate the democratic feel of putting the ordinance to a majority vote, um, I really want to stand with all of the people who are in favor of Three, but I'm going to ask you to vote no on Three. Um, and it's because of the sense of urgency. Um, we, we say like, "Oh, something that is so important should take the time for everybody to vote on it." And you know what? This is important. And we've been waiting. And we've been waiting, and we've been waiting. We in the community have been waiting for something like this. Now, I am a newer Arkansas resident, and that's important because I have very recent experience with this that is related to this urgency, the need for you to say no on Amendment Three. I moved here about a year ago, and I, uh, in the first week of being here, parking my car on Dixon, my car was vandalized, um, they wrote the word, uh, "whore" across my driver's side window. I assume that either they didn't like my out-of-state license plate, that they didn't like blue cars, or maybe they didn't like my rainbow bumper sticker. I'm going to assume it was the latter. So, given that that's my first impression of Fayetteville, out-of-state, new resident, first impression of Fayetteville, I was, um, afraid for how I would be treated here. Fast forward a few weeks, I am looking for a rental, um, trying to find a place, and every time I went to meet a landlord so I could see where I might live, I took my magnetic bumper sticker off because I needed a place to live. I didn't need to be proud in that moment. I had to hide that part in order to make sure that I had a place to live. Now, urgency means, I don't know if any of you have ever experienced the very real fear of not having a place to live for you and for your loved ones. You have to find it, and you have to find it now. And that is a very real fear. It's very urgent. The mem, I am now a member of the community. I've since moved on from the rentals. I've bought a home. I work here, shop here, I own property here, I pay taxes, and I vote in Ward Two. And although I haven't been here that long, I am still waiting. And your residents who have been here for far longer than I have have been waiting, and we've been waiting. And it might not seem that long to wait just from August to November, but if you're facing employment issues and you're facing being homeless, that many months is, is forever. So, for all of the reasons that the people want you to vote no on Amendment Three, and for the reason of urgency, please vote no on Amendment Three.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lex Lee. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, Arkansas. I reside in South, one fifty South Hills Avenue. I, I'm here for, um, voting against Amendment Three. I do believe that we, this issue here is a minority issue. If, if we leave it to the majority to vote, we will be suffering, continue suffering. We need your help to do what is right for the minority. It's, there's no one in this room would tell me I cannot work to provide for my family, to support my family because of my sexual, sexuality. It's not fair for me or for my community, or in that sense, to do that. No one has any kind of right to tell me I can live in a place because of my gender. It's not fair, and that's, there's no right around it, and everyone knows it's not fair. It's, we can't vote on this issue. We can't let the public vote because the min, this is a minority issue again. If we do that, it's, it's bullying. It's, it's going to be continued bullying if that continues to happen. That's why I'm asking you guys to do what is right and speak for the minority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Jensen. I live at two eighty-one North Platinum Drive, and I would like to speak, number one, about the public restroom issue. Um, it is blatantly misogynistic to assume that a transgendered male to female is going to molest women or children in a women's restroom, and that that kind of sexual assault is not possible in other places. It is just as possible in other places and statistically is more likely to occur in other places. Uh, number two, regarding Amendment Three, our government is entrusted with protecting the rights of the minority, and there is a reason why we passed Brown v. Board. Um, it is because the public cannot be trusted to safeguard the rights of minority citizens. You were elected for that purpose, to protect all of the people in your city, and I urge you to do so. So, please vote no on Amendment Three specifically because it is your responsibility, not the responsibility of the public, to safeguard the rights of minority citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I might ask if anybody wants to speak as you begin to queue up here behind the podium?
Hi, y'all. Most of you all know me. I'm Haley Zega. I live at fifteen thirty-two East Columbus Boulevard, Fayetteville, Arkansas. Um, and I live, I have lived in Fayetteville for the majority of my life, eighteen years. Recently, I went to college. I went to college in New York City, and when I tell people that I'm from Arkansas, they assume that I'm racist. They assume that I'm misogynistic. They assume really terrible things, that I'm very close-minded. But I tell them that I come from Fayetteville, and that means that I grew up in a community that, a community that is incredibly open-minded and is incredibly sympathetic to the rights of the minorities, and it is incredibly- and it is incredibly nurturing place to grow up. And I try to change people's minds about their perceptions of the South. But I can't do that if, if we are not safeguarding civil rights. And that is why I'm asking you to not leave this incredibly important decision, pardon me, decision, up to the majority. I am the majority. I'm a white girl. I mean, and I'm straight, but I know that being part of the majority does not mean that I have the best interest of the minority at heart. Thankfully, I do, because I have friends that are members of the minority. And I want for them all the rights that I have because I don't see them as any different, and I don't think anybody else should. And so I'm, I'm begging you, please, do what we elected you to do, and please, protect those people that can't protect themselves. Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Chadbourne. I've lived here in Fayetteville since two thousand and seven. I currently reside at seven oh one Sycamore Street. Well, I've lived here since two thousand and seven officially, notwithstanding my four-year term in the military, to include one year in Iraq, defending the rights and civil liberties of fellow Fayettevilleites. I would like to, if I may, share an observation that I've made in terms of amendment number three, putting it up to a public vote. I've noticed that of all of the speakers who have spoken about amendment three, putting this up to a vote for the public, is that the overwhelming majority of the arguments in favor of putting it up to a public vote tend to be the only ones that don't seem to be religious in nature, barring, of course, I've long ago accepted that people have every right to think and believe as they see, feel, and I am completely fine with that. I would never consciously want to restrict any individual's right to their own personally-held beliefs. But what, forgive me, I'm stumbling on my own words. This should not be put up to a vote of the public because I would like to remind people in this room what happened with Proposition Eight in California. This was a civil rights and civil liberties issue that was put up to public vote in the state of California. And it was passed by a majority vote and later deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court of the United States. And also of another issue in the nineteen sixties, put up to public vote, which was interracial marriage, crushed by public vote, but later overturned by the United States Supreme Court. When people are arguing that minority rights should not be voted on by the majority, those two examples are the best ones that I personally can think of. And as I've said, I'm an Iraqi Freedom veteran, I'm a proud Fayetteville resident. I moved here from two thousand and seven from Portland, Maine, one of the most socially-liberal states in the U.S., and this place makes me happy to live here. Please, with respect, don't pass the third, amendment number three for everyone's best interest because everything good about Fayetteville, it is everything good about Fayetteville is the diverse community and the good people that live here, and it makes me proud to stay here. That's everything that made me want to come back here after I got out of the Army, after I got home from Iraq. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Hi, I was going to stick around and make general, I'm sorry. My name is Laura Phillips. I live at two oh five five South Klein. I'm a mom, I'm a woman of faith, I'm a nurse, I'm a university employee, I'm on the board of directors at the Center for Equality here in Fayetteville. I also need to get home to my babies. So, I'll make this relatively brief. Please, please don't vote for amendment three. The world literally is watching you. I asked my Facebook friends to sound off on who is watching this. I've got everything from California, Ohio, South Korea, Pennsylvania, Norway, people in Missouri, Massachusetts, Long Island. Joe Jervis with Joe My God is live streaming this meeting because Fayetteville continues to lead the pack. How many of you guys went to the U of A? A lot of us? The alma mater, the line that always gets me is beacon of hope. We are a beacon of hope to not just people in our state, not just these kids in small towns that want to come somewhere safe. I noticed the other night when we were here talking about moving the meeting to the town center, one of the visions for two thousand and twenty is having a reputation as a safe community. We need to have that. In order to be a safe community, we need to not put the rights of the minority up against the vote of the majority. We've already heard some of the vitriol, I'm not going to use the bad word, Mayor Jordan, I'm being good.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Acidic comments, let's call them that.
All right.
I'm being good. But, but we have to make this town safe. We have to say to the world at this point, literally the world is watching y'all, that you have it in your hearts to do what you know is right, that we can be leaders again. A lot of you know my backstory, a lot of you know what I stand for and what my family has been through. This affects all of my friends, and it affects our reputation as a town, and it affects our reputation as leaders, not just in Arkansas, but in the world. So I encourage you to vote no on three. Yay for the potty amendment. Please do the right thing. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Williams. I'm also asking that you vote against amendment three. I am pretty sure that probably every single one of you has had a threat against you of one kind or another, probably, that you will not be re-elected, that you will get very organized opposition. I know that's a real threat. I understand that, and I feel sorry for you being in that position. At the same time, you are elected to do what is right for the city, and it is my opinion that putting this amendment on this ordinance is wrong for the city. If someone wants to take this to a referendum, if they want to take this for a vote, make them go out and work for it, make them stand up, their, I won't use the word I want to, put their opinions in front of the public about why they want a vote on this. Make people be upfront about their motives. Make people be upfront about what they're trying to achieve. Don't do it for them. Don't hand it to them. You need to vote for the ordinance, you need to vote against this amendment. Make people stand up if they want to, while you stand up yourselves and do what is right by taking the heat, which is just an unfortunate part of your job. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Pickle, and I live at one one seventy-four West Kiddo Springs Road, and I'm here to ask you not to vote for amendment three. Some of my friend, my best friend, she's pansexual, and since we're, since we're only in seventh grade, we can't vote. And I believe that, you know, that you guys should decide of what should happen. You're, sorry, I'm a little shocked. And, to be honest, I mean, I want, I don't want my friend to be scared about telling people, afraid that she might lose some friends or she might get beat up about something. I want her to feel open, you know, happy and stuff. And I'm think, if, if you let the public vote about this, some people will vote no, will vote no to, like, equal rights and things. And, all right, I wasn't really prepared for this one. And, and so, just vote no against it. I mean, what about the smaller kids, the people who can't vote? Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Maria Baisda Hicks. I'm a resident of Ward Four. And I'd like to speak in bewilderment about the need for amendment two and in opposition to three. And really, my bewilderment is, most of the people who have spoken with regard to the bathroom issue and the transgendered, I'm concerned, it relates to my concern for amendment three. People's fundamental lack of understanding of what it means to be transgendered or have a gender identity issue. That fundamental lack of understanding that it's a choice to live, you know, in women's clothes or in men's clothes if you were born the other gender. This is not a choice. People who are transgender are men and women as much as I am a woman. That's who they are. It's, it's not a belief, it's not a choice, it's who they are. And so, to equate that with a likelihood of hurting children or raping or, you know, simply choosing, like someone would choose to go in dressed as a woman to videotape someone, those are completely different things, and equating them is very wrong. But I do understand because of that ignorance that that amendment is needed just to expand what essentially amendment one and two do is the same thing as the ordinance as a whole, is affirm things that should be clear. So it's just affirming what we all know.
I am right. I might ask you all to turn off your cell phones. I probably didn't tell you that. That's my fault. But let's turn off cell phones or put them on vibration.
And so, you know, I support them, I just, I'm bewildered by their need. For number three, I'm going to tell you a brief story, and I was going to speak on the general, my support for the general ordinance, but obviously I need to get home to my babies as well. I went into a shop here in Fayetteville. I was speaking Spanish, because that's my first language, with my cousin, and it was a furniture store, a vintage furniture store. I make very good money. I drive a very nice car. This was a weekend, I'm dressed down. I'm speaking Spanish to my cousin, and all of a sudden I notice a clerk walking around with us. And it wasn't in a, may I help you, kind of way. It was in a constant, that's really expensive, I don't know if you can afford that. Literally, those were the words said to me because I was speaking in Spanish to her. Discrimination happens in this city. I love Fayetteville, but we cannot, you know, cover this guy with one hand. It happens. And so, from someone who has been treated as less than human on multiple occasions, to be, to be put forth to the same people who didn't see that happening in a store, the store was full. No one really noticed. My cousin and I noticed because it was something that we lived every day. So to put it to a vote of a majority who doesn't really live it, who doesn't understand, who cannot possibly comprehend what it is to be treated as less than human, as less than because you are different or misunderstood, we should not put people in that situation because they're going to do things. The result will be something that we will be ashamed of, and I don't want our city to be ashamed. I love this city. My children are growing up in this city. And so I would hope that you guys take the responsibility that we have given you and vote against amendment three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm Bob Winkelman, twenty-two sixteen North Old Wire Road. My family, along with the Williams family, has been part of this community since the war between the states. It's impossible for me to calculate how many dollars we paid. Well, let me tell you where I stand quickly, and that is, I am sick of hearing people tell you you can't trust the people of Fayetteville to vote properly. Every one of you is where you are because of a majority vote of the people. You can trust the people of Fayetteville. They'll do the right thing. I hope that we will not, the comments you've heard here are not representative of the community. The community would favor, in large measure, majority vote. I leave you with that thought, and I'll hopefully, I'm eighty-two years old and may not last long enough to comment on marriage, but I'll try. But I leave you with one thought: Trust the people of Fayetteville. They're good people.
I was going to comment on the whole bill, but I'm going to just stick with the part three that everybody is debating here. First of all, if you just dropped the whole thing, we wouldn't need that third amendment. I do, I do go to church here. I, I was actually abused as a child in church sexually at age ten. I don't know how people can address this issue without thinking in those terms. It caused a lot of shame in my life. I think you're opening up a can of worms, and if you, if you do this, I, I've met a God that, that will punish. If, if, if you guys really would listen to God, he would tell you what to do here. The people of this, of this city, just like the people of almost all the cities are against this stuff, it's just the judicial system wants to overrule it all. And that's because they're bought. Are you bought? I hope you're not bought. I know I paid you a thousand dollars to do my bidding and taxes this year. I just hope you will do my bidding, and my bidding is what God wants, it's not what somebody else wants. And I am really, I'm with this last guy. The city of Fayetteville needs to be let in on this, not left out.
Okay.
My name is Emile Fanaf, and I live at five 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 eight East Ray Payne Drive, Fayetteville. And it was, as I was listening to those people in opposition of the amendment three, it was clear that they felt that there were too many people that were going to be negatively affected by it, to pass it, in a vote, if it goes to the people. And I, I agree with them. There will be too many people negatively affected by this amendment. So I urge you to allow the people to vote. There's a reason that they'll vote, that they, I'm hoping that they vote no, it's because they'll be negatively impacted, as I will.
Who else? All right, I'm going to close to public comment. Now that wasn't so bad, was it? Now these are the amendments. We have, kept with you, read those amendments, I seem to have.
Well, the first amendment is an amendment to the exemptions section, which is section one nineteen point oh seven. And in that one, it would strike the current exemption, which is more limited, and replace it with the following: "Nothing in this chapter shall be construed to require any religious or denominational institution or association to open its tax-exempt property or place of worship to any individual or group for any ceremony or meeting except for an activity or service that is supported in whole or part by public funds." So that would be the first amendment for the city council to determine.
Okay. Let's have some discussion. Anybody got anything to say? Everybody good? All right. So, would you call the roll?
There, there should be, yeah, we already have a motion second.
Yeah, oh, we already had a motion.
You're right, Mayor. Go ahead.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. First amendment passes. I don't want no hand clapping here. Cheering. Okay. First Amendment passes. I don't want no hand clapping here. Cheering or booing, all right? Has everybody got me? Okay. All right, on the second one. Designated facilities of gender segregated space shall not be in violation of this chapter. Nothing in this chapter shall be construed as allowing any person to enter any gender segregated space for any unlawful purpose. Do we have a motion in a second on that, or do you need to read that?
You just read it, Mayor. I think there is a motion in a second.
We already have a motion second. What discussion do we have on that? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennet?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Adam? Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Ah, yes, now the biggie. Would you like to read the title of that, Kent?
Yes, I'll just read the title for this. "An Ordinance Refer the Proposed Chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to the Fayetteville Voters for Their Determination Whether to Enact Chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to Protect the Civil Rights of Fayetteville Citizens and Visitors and to Create the Position of Civil Rights Administrator for the City of Fayetteville."
Okay, let's get started. Who wants to discuss it first? I believe Councilmember Tennet has laid out his plan, unless you would like to say something?
No, I can say something real quick.
Sure.
One of the things about this that's interested me, not necessarily in a good way, is that there's a lot of assumptions that are made. Some of them, people have said, "The majority won't support this." I struggle with that a little bit, because if we don't let you vote, then to me, it's saying that fifty-one percent of you, we think, will vote for discrimination. And what I've seen over these last few weeks is that a lot of people that oppose this, and I fall into this category, and you'll see that later when I comment about the overall ordinance, my problems are not necessarily about anything to do with discrimination. It's more how we enforce it, how we execute it, how we're going to deal with it as a city. It's not the discrimination pieces. And people are assuming also, I think, that if we don't send this...
I'm sorry, I don't even know. What was that?
I'm not sure.
I don't either.
Anyway. Oh, I forgot. No, I'm just kidding. No, I didn't forget. But there's also this idea that I heard several times, that if we don't pass this to the voters, this opposition will rise up, and it will be more hate towards those that were discriminated. And I just think that a lot of people may come up later and oppose this, not because of the discrimination pieces, but other things. And I think we'll hear that from businesspeople and from a lot of people in the majority that have seen discrimination. To assume that nobody in the majority knows anything about discrimination is quite a leap. And I think if you're doing something for all people, you can't make assumptions like that. And I think that, you know, to me, when I hear somebody say, and I won't say her name, but she's an outstanding citizen, and I've been a fan of hers a long time, she voted, or she wished we voted against Amendment Three, but she also said that Fayetteville was an incredibly open-minded place. And so I struggle with that. If we're that incredibly open-minded, and we have people that are anti-discrimination, but maybe just don't believe in some of the other parts of this, then do we really want to say here and think that fifty-one percent of this city will vote against that? We know that? I don't know that. Not the city that I know. And I know the entire city. And I'll share some of those ideas and beliefs and personal things, because I think it's important to do that, but I won't do it now. So this, to me, is not as much about discrimination as us putting something together and letting the people vote on it. And so I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Mark?
As I've listened to the discussion this evening, I've tried to be very open-minded about this, because I initially had concerns about parts of it. But the amendment that we're talking about right now would make it very easy for me to pass the buck. It'd make it very easy for me to say, hey, I've got an election coming up, I am going to just let this fly by. But that's not the kind of person I am, and that's not why I was elected to this position. What I've heard over and over this evening, and what I know from my own experience, is that fear will win out truth. Thank you for saying that. I also know that public safety for all is not optional, and we need to move forward with this. I also know that the rights of the minority up to the vote of the majority is not always fair. I know that the architects of misinformation are often better funded than those that are a disenfranchised minority. I know this. I think when we have the young attorney, the young lawyer say that democracy is imperfect and fails when the rights of the minorities are an issue, I think that he speaks the truth. When Ms. Nay, another lawyer, comes forward and she talks about James Madison, "Let's not subject the civil rights of the minority to the tyranny of the majority," I think that's truth. And I was especially moved, because I am so attached to Fayetteville and to the University of Arkansas, with a, what Ms. Phillips said, comes from the alma mater, that I practically am emotionally attached to, and that is, it talks about the University of Arkansas being the beacon of hope on the brow of the beauty. Yeah, "Pierce the dawn on the brow of the beauty." I love that song. But it does speak to me, and it speaks truth to me. And so I'm going to say, I'm not going to take the easy path. I'm going to take the right path, and I'm not going to support Amendment Three.
Okay. Who else?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'd just like to say, I've seriously considered sending this to the ballot as the best option, probably for the last two weeks. But I was just thinking tonight, as I was listening to everyone speak, that if I've ever heard from Fayetteville constituents before, especially in Ward Four, this has been it. It's been in the last two to three weeks. I've never had this much public input. And we've had some pretty heated debates on the council. I mean, I've heard informed, uninformed, good arguments, what I thought were not so great arguments. But I have heard from the constituents, and I know what the majority of them want right now, and have asked me to do. And that's before the council meeting tonight, after the public input that we've taken. I also believe that Fayetteville and the people who've lived here have been educating for years, and I don't really know what two and a half more months is going to do for that process. I just don't know. I think the major point here is that we have an opportunity to do what we were elected to do. Save twenty to thirty thousand dollars of public money, vote on this, and the next step in the political process, if it wins or fails, is to take it to a referendum, vote for the other side. And they have that option available to them, and it's free. So I'm going to vote to save the public money and do what we were elected to do tonight.
Any other, yes, thank you.
I just wanted to offer a reason for my vote, which is, it's not always easy being elected, because it's your job to make decisions. I take that very seriously. That's why I'm going to make my decision tonight and choose to vote this ordinance up or down. So I'll vote against Amendment Three. I'm not particularly threatened at all by a general or a special election, because I have a lot of faith in the community of Fayetteville. But I did want to make a comment now for one specific reason. While so many people are watching, people in Fayetteville are watching this who have never participated in politics before, register to vote. That's it.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I'm going to say something. About 2003, I've just seen Councilmember from Ward Four, we had a smoking ordinance before us. And I had heard that we could send this to a vote of the people, and we had had months of debate on that smoking ordinance. People protested in the streets. And it was a very difficult time. I had heard at that time, over a two-week period, from about a thousand people, that vote was fifty-fifty. Boy, I wanted to turn that over to the people. Man, I just thought, man, I can get out from under this. And then I was reading about people that used to sell sculptures. They weren't quite as good in the beginning. So what they would do would melt candle wax and granite and smear it all over that statue, and it looked beautiful. But the person that came to buy that statue would always take a candle and run it over that statue. And then that candle wax would melt, and the imperfections would come out. And then the sculptor would either be sold, or the artist would go back and carve out something much better. And I suddenly realized, when I read that that night, that the heat was being applied to me, and all my imperfections was coming out. And I couldn't take the easy way out that night. I said, the easy way would be for me to get out from under the responsibility, but I was elected to make a decision. I believed in it then, I believe in it now. If I have to vote, I will not vote to send it to the people, because we were elected to make decisions by you. And I told them that night, I will stand and vote. Now, I'm not a voting member of this council unless it's a tie, but you need to know my position. And my position is, we need to do what we've been elected to do. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
No.
Patty?
No.
Tennet?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Long?
No.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Okay. That fails. Now, council, would you like a break for about ten minutes?
Please.
We're going to take a ten-minute break. I guess you can go to the bathroom one at a time, or if you leave all at once, your seats may be taken. I'm going to take that time for just a little while. Can I get everyone to take their seats, and we'll get ready to get started. If you Can I get everyone to take their seats and we'll get ready to get started? If you take your seats, we'll get another head count and then we'll get started here in a moment. Thank you. I'm gonna call the city council meeting back to order. Now, we're on the third and final reading of the Civil Rights Administration ordinance. So what comments do we have from the council on the overall ordinance to begin? Or do you want to start right in with public comment?
Mayor, just in anticipation that some of these amendments might have been passed, I have Exhibit A that is current as of this vote.
Okay. Okay. Is the council ready to hear public hearing of the comments? Okay. All right, all right, let's hey! Everybody settle down. Okay, here is. Everybody listen to me. All right, on public comment, here's the rules. Bed Bull citizens will speak first. I want your name and address. You get one time at the microphone. Now, I'm gonna ask you, they said that there's people waiting outside. I would like for you this time to finish up your remarks and then step outside and let somebody else come in. Okay? All right. The only time you can come back is if council member wants to ask questions. I want you to keep your remarks to the chair. I don't want you to engage another council member. I don't want any attacks on council members' character. I would also ask the city council to be courteous to the public. I don't want you engaging another member of the public. I don't want any hand clapping, cheers, jeers, laughing out loud because that causes disruptions and it prolongs the meeting. Okay. And please, let's try not to be repetitious. Be brief. And once this vote's taken, we have other city council business to take care of. I don't need a bunch of people crowding around up here. We've got other things we've gotta do. So be respectful, let's continue the meeting. Everybody good with that? Well, does everybody understand?
Good way to put that.
Absolutely, folks, be courteous. All right, who would like to be first?
I guess I would, Mr. Mayor. It's Peter Tonison, 3500 Hearthstone Drive. I guess I grew up in New York City, so I learned how to be pushy. But I do have a legitimate reason for trying to go now. I'm hoping that some of the things I have to say and show may change the tenor of the debate a little bit. I was quoted in the newspaper after the last meeting as the person who said this is a solution in search of a problem. And then the newspaper went on to say that, they said if anything that appeared to be an issue. Let me see if I can find the exact quote. I think that's why we have so many people here. Oh, yeah, here it is. Okay, the paper said perhaps, quote, "The most frequent knock," well, those are my quotes, "on Petty's proposal Tuesday was his and other supporters' failure to cite any specific instances of discrimination." And then it has my quote, and I think that's why we have so many witnesses here talking about instances of discrimination. But what I'm gonna propose to do is look at the statute, and I think it's an awful ordinance, and I want to explain why. And I'm gonna start with, normally government looks at a problem and it says, is there a problem? And then it says, what is the nature and the extent of that problem? And then it finds a solution. Federal law already, I have statistics here on employment, for example. Now, that's one aspect of it. There's employment, housing, and then there are other aspects of discrimination against LGBT. But I have these charts and statistics. I have tape. I don't know if there's any place I can tape them up. No, maybe, can someone hold them? And I'll go through them quickly. One is a chart from the Small Business Administration Office of Advocacy. It's dated 2011. Mr. Mayor, do you know if the committee members have seen that?
Not that I know.
All right, I'll get to the point. If someone could hold this up for the committee?
You're losing some papers there.
If the committee will look at that chart, they'll see that the SBA counted 113 million jobs, and then it breaks them down into zero to four employees and five to nine and ten to fourteen and so forth. And federal law would cover up through employers that employ fifteen or more. What jumps out initially about the ordinance is that it goes all the way to employers of five or more. If you look at the statistics, I have a pie chart that I made.
I'm sure you do.
Now, these are US employment statistics.
Yes.
Basically, eighty-five percent of that pie chart is already protected employment, all except three wedges, and I'll just point to them. So the federal law protects eighty-five percent of the jobs to LGBT people. And this statute would take it all the way to five percent. I mean, ninety-five percent would be protected under the ordinance. The more you do that, the closer and closer you force yourself onto people who may not want to be forced upon. And I think that's a big problem with this statute. The state of Arkansas uses in its Civil Rights Act its ten or more employees, I believe, under the state law, which would cover about ninety percent of employment. I have the statistics, I'll leave them with the committee. The number of jobs in the state is about a million. But the percentages are very parallel. And so, I mean, is there really a problem with employment? I don't think there is. I think, now, I have another chart here.
Okay.
Right, what this shows is that the stat, the ordinance says that it is a civil rights ordinance, but it's not really. It says it applies to real or perceived discrimination, and it lists fourteen categories. Five of those are already covered by state law. I'll get to that later in terms of the legal memo that the committee had. But really, the other categories are all addressed to these gender-issue categories. There's no protection for real or perceived ethnicity or real or perceived religion. It's not in there. This is a statute, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, is designed solely to advance the interests, and it would have been more honest if you just said the LGBT Special Protection Ordinance instead of passing it off as a civil rights ordinance, which it is not. And then, I mean, it claims to protect veterans. The reason why, I don't think there are any veterans on the committee. I am a veteran and I was also a legal officer in the military. The reason the veterans thing is in there isn't to protect veterans. Veterans don't need protection. It says all veterans other than those who have a dishonorable discharge. Well, there are five kinds of discharge. An honorable discharge, a general under honorable, an other-than-honorable, a bad conduct, and a dishonorable. Basically, that provision is there because this statute was drafted by a very aggressive pro-LGBT, you know, it's not the outsiders who are defending the Christians and the religious people from this town. It's the outsiders who are advancing this statute through the city council and wrote it. This is a very complex statute. I have it to where you could put about fourteen square feet of it on the wall if you want to see it. It is, it was not written overnight. This is a very pointed statute that has little to nothing to do with civil rights. It has to do with the advancement of special protections for LGBT. Is that wrong in and of itself? No. But the way it does it is wrong. This thing comes like a meteorite, except more like a sniper's bullet because it's being done in the summertime when people are off on vacation and the citizens of this town haven't had time to learn about this yet. And what's crazy, I mean, there's so many ironies in this ordinance. People say they came to Fayetteville because it was a wonderful place to live. It is. They came here and it was a wonderful, wonderful place to live before this ordinance ever appeared. And I submit the reason it is is because of the fundamental decency of the people of Fayetteville, the people who will now not get to vote on a referendum.
Oh, you have some more. Okay.
This is the memorandum that was written to accompany this ordinance. Let's read it. It says, "While there is no specific Arkansas statute," and again, I'm not an Arkansas lawyer, I don't want to be an Arkansas lawyer, I don't want to be here, I want to find out how to get rid of the rust on our hydrangeas. But it says, "While there is no specific Arkansas statute, I'm here because this ordinance would make me and some of the things that I do and want to do a crime. I have never had a point on my driver's license, ever, in forty-seven years of driving, never, not one. I've never had a flight violation, I never had a grievance in thirty-seven years as a lawyer, and now I'm in a town that would say things that I might do could be criminal. And that's why I'm here. While there is no specific Arkansas statute expressly authorizing a municipality to enact an anti-discrimination ordinance, the state legislature has authorized municipalities to legislate pursuant to their police powers under a number of statutes. Generally, a municipality is authorized to perform any function and exercise full legislative power in any and all matters whatsoever of whatsoever nature pertaining to its municipal affairs and may even legislate on issues designated as state affairs as long as the regulation is not in conflict with or contrary to state law." And it cites a statute. Now, why does this one-page memo nowhere mention the fact that there is a state law in Arkansas that deals with civil rights? It has no criminal penalties in that statute, none. It has a graduated system of fines, which I also have printed out, but I'm not gonna take the time because it's long. It has a graduated system of fines to deal with this. They're civil fines, they're not criminal penalties against Christians who have views that are not popular with certain minorities. Then, the memo says, more specifically, a statute, a city has the power to make and publish, the statute doesn't say a city has the power, it says the city has power, the state has the power. To make and publish bylaws and ordinances is not inconsistent with the laws of the state. Again, it's inconsistent with the Civil Rights Act of Arkansas. Which as to them seem necessary to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity, and improve the morals, order, comfort, and convenience of such corporations and inhabitants thereof." And it cites the statute 1455-122. See where that one is.
You do have something?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a point. Let me see if I- Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a point. Let me see if I can find the one that's really egregious.
Okay.
I'll keep moving on here. "Cities have the power to prevent injury or annoyance within the limits of the municipal corporation from anything dangerous, offensive, or unhealthy." And then there's a set of brackets in the memo. Well, if you look at 14-54-1031, let me see if I can find that, because I do have it here. All right, what that says, it was quoted in part. It says, "Cities..." shall have power to "prevent injury or annoyance within the limits of the municipal corporation from anything dangerous, offensive, or unhealthy." And then it says, which isn't included in the memo, "and quote, 'any nuisance to be abated within the jurisdiction, given the Board of Health' in Section 14-262-102." And if you look at that, that sets up a Board of Health, and the purpose of the Board of Health is to secure the city and its inhabitants from the evils of contagious, malignant, and infectious diseases. The logical implication of that is that traditional religious groups are dangerous, whatever I said, malignant diseases. I mean, that's what it is. These people are being protected. If you're using the authority of that statute, that's the analogy. Then it says, "Cities may also prevent or regulate the carrying on of any trade, business, or vocation of a tendency dangerous to morals, health, or safety." And if you read that statute, it's wrongly cited. It's not 104.3(c), it's 104.4(c). That's a statute that applies to body houses, calculated dishonesty or crime, dishonest characters, persons of known bad reputation, burglars, pickpocket sneakies, forgers, fakers, confidence men, common cheats, tricksters, and the like. I mean, if the statute is protecting it against that, and you read the statute in its entirety, this statute is aimed at traditional religion. How do we know that? Because those are the people in the ordinance who get sanctuary. Now, that sanctuary has just been expanded from sanctuary in the sanctuary to sanctuary on the whole church grounds. But it's still clear that that's where the attack is aimed, because if the attacks weren't going in that direction, those people wouldn't need exemptions or sanctuary. This is an ordinance, and it's more than that. If you look at the ordinance, and let me find the sections quickly. And I'm sorry, but I've been waiting here since two o'clock, and all this talk around bathrooms, all this talk about bathrooms. It's tough to be here for eight and a half hours without getting to one.
I truly understand that.
All right, sir. It says, "The exemptions for religion in..." Thank you. "Exemptions for religion in the ordinance say nonsecular positions in terms of personnel at the churches," and people have objected to that previously. But then it also says in A, F1, and 2, and G, "permissible, bonafied, religious, or denominational preference." So, it's got to be permissible, and it's got to be bonafied, I guess, in the measure of the commissar, who's going to oversee this ordinance, or denominational preference. So, it's got to be permissible and bonafied. Necessary results of such bonafied condition. If you read the full language of that, which I'm not going to take the time to get, what this ordinance does, there are three levels of constitutional protection: strict scrutiny, intermediate scrutiny, it's also called heightened scrutiny, and rational basis. And I'll finish up pretty quickly after I get to that. Strict scrutiny protects suspect classifications, which is when a government tries to legislate about race, national origin, religion, alienage, and poverty. Churches normally are entitled to the benefit of strict scrutiny, so that the government has to have a compelling interest to limit what people do, not just churches, but people in their religion. And it has to, the law has to be carefully tailored to achieve those objectives. In this ordinance, if you read it, you need to read it and think about it. It reverses that role. It puts the burden on religious organizations to justify their conduct. The normal level of scrutiny that applies, the intermediate level is very, very blurry. It's usually where someone tries to get strict scrutiny, and the court says, "Well, we're not going to call it strict scrutiny, but we'll call it this." And intermediate scrutiny is used generally in gender cases. So, normally, people coming to a governmental agency seeking protection for gender would be protected in the courts to a level of intermediate scrutiny. And it's religious people who have the First Amendment clearly on their side who would be entitled to strict scrutiny protection. And this ordinance reverses that, and that is the second reason why I think it's not going to survive. I'm giving you this, although I don't like the ordinance, and I admit it, I'm telling you that I don't think this ordinance will survive for two reasons. One, because it's inconsistent with the state's civil rights law, in that it has criminal penalties, which the state law doesn't have, and it has different classifications, which the state law doesn't have, and it has a much lower protection for religion than the state law has. And the second reason I think it's going to be shot down, and let's go back to the memo, and then I'm almost done, except for some closing thoughts. The only case cited in this memo, this same issue is happening in Montana. I have an opinion of counsel from the city of Dillon. It's available online. It's total ten pages. It's three and a half pages of lawyerly writing. But it goes into all kinds of issues that aren't in this memo. This little one-page memo that you've got makes no mention of strict scrutiny. That's crazy. It makes no mention of the Hobby Lobby decision. That's nuts. It makes no mention of the fact that Arkansas already has a civil rights statute that's decided at the state level, because states are starting to say, "Wait a minute. We don't want this polyglot civil rights within our borders. We want to control this at the state level." But, and I'm not faulting Mr. Pennington or Mr. Williams, because I've been a lawyer. And there's no rule when you're a lawyer that says, "You've got to play with the marbles in the game, and you also got to represent your client." I mean, this memo that was given may be the best argument that can be made for this ordinance. But I think the reason the memo doesn't cover these things is because the ordinance is going to fail, and it is going to fail miserably. But let me read this last case. The only case cited, one case, Phillips versus Town of Oak Grove. That case is a case in which the Phillipses, it's a 98 case, they wanted to have a commercial emu operation within the town limits. And there was an ordinance against keeping commercial chickens and commercial pigs within the town limit. And the court upheld that emus were like pigs and chickens, and they were obnoxious, and so the Phillips couldn't have their commercial business. But here's what they said. "Municipal corporations derive their legislative powers from the general laws of the state. A municipality has no powers except those expressly conferred by the legislature, and those necessarily or fairly implied as incident to or essential for the attainment of the purpose declared. The police power of the state is founded in public necessity, and this necessity must exist in order to justify its exercise. It is always justified when it can be said to be in the interest of the public health, public safety, public comfort, and when it is, private rights must yield to the public security under reasonable laws." This is a balancing, this is a rational basis test. This is not a test that has anything to do with protecting the religious rights of the people in the city of Fayetteville, no less the state of Arkansas. And I submit that this ordinance is going to fail, because I think if a baker bakes 200 cupcakes, and he puts them out for sale, then anyone who walks in the door can get them. But I believe, under Arkansas law and under constitutional law, if a baker is asked to bake a cake for a homosexual wedding, and that offends his personal religious views, and he is then punished criminally, this law will fail. Or if a photographer is asked to photograph a wedding, because that's using your personal individual skills. It is not just, I work in an industry where there are huge numbers of people who are LGBT, but it's not an issue, because it's not an issue. But when you get a law that goes down and pressures small groups, small offices, my dentist's office would have to hire even a very overt LGBT, whether they wanted to or not, or they could be charged with a crime. That's outrageous. An office of seven people? But here's my final thoughts. I really don't like being negative, because, no, I don't. I mean, you cannot, there's some things you just can't legislate. Chicago has the second-largest police force in the United States. They have the highest murder rate. When I made that reference to Pave Paradise and put up a parking lot last week, what I meant is, you know, don't it always seem to know that you don't know what you got till it's gone? The great thing about Fayetteville, which some people don't want to hear, but is the fact that there is a good, strong, religious base here. And they may not, I was driving through Nebraska one night, now I'm almost done, and I heard, I heard a rabbi on the radio. It was late at night. I was all alone, listening to public radio. And he was commenting on the fact that although his Jewish people have tried to have their own state since the Holocaust, it had been nothing but war and bloodshed, and he came to realize that actually Jews were probably safer in Christian democracies than they were anywhere else. And what I'm saying is, I wish that you will think, not just in terms of the pure legality of this statute, because I think it's a vicious, bad statute. It's not an even-handed statute. It's not even honest in its title. And think more in terms of common sense and common decency, because I believe there will be more justice for this community if this city council acts along those lines than along the lines of this ordinance.
Thank you. All right.
My name is Evan McDonald. I am an eight-year resident of Ward 1 in the 1300 block of Washington Avenue. I am one of the co-owners of The Smokin' Barrel on Dixon, and one of the co-owners of The Apple Blossom Brewing Company, the largest brew hub in the state. I'd like to thank the council for their time and their attention to the matter, and promise to use the time given to me wisely. Our businesses have enjoyed success beyond our wildest dreams, due largely to the support of the people of this region, both as customers and employees. Our employees work hard for us and for themselves, reaping the benefits that come from hard work and good service. These employees deserve the security of knowing that their employment is based on their ability to do their job and nothing else. Our businesses are meritocracies. And while it's foolish to assume that all aspects of life will be based on merit, we can at least hope that our local government will join us in this moment to show that fairness and tolerance are the tools to a brighter future for the town we love so dearly. Security and productivity will move us forward, not bigotry and intolerance. We ask the council to join us in choosing merit over arbitrary guidelines, to help give their citizens and our employees the security that they deserve. And on a personal note, as a citizen of Ward 1, I would like to ask my alderman to support tolerance and security on the matter. As I raise my child in our beautiful town, I would like him to know that his future is based on what he accomplishes, rather than who he chooses to love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carrie Phelan, North Maxwell. I'll keep this brief. No one wants to be discriminated against, regardless of whether it's skin color, religion, sexual orientation, actual or perceived, et cetera. But I have serious concerns about this ordinance and how it's written. I don't have any problem, I mean, I support the idea of protecting the minority. And if this ordinance, I'm just honestly surprised to hear so much LGBT talk going on, because I didn't see, really, I didn't get that from reading the ordinance. If this ordinance is specifically designed to protect that specific minority, then it should be written as such. People who know me know that I don't care who you sleep with. I don't care who you love, but I have serious problems with this ordinance on the grounds of property rights infringement, that in terms of private ownership of real estate and real property and such, it seems to me to be an unnecessary expense and waste of the taxpayers' money, because it seems to me to be a layer, add a layer of administrative bureaucracy and redundancy to an existence, to a system, adds a layer of bureaucracy and redundancy when there already exists a system to hear claims of discrimination, and that system is the legal system. The position, the administrator that would be hired to enforce or investigate or whatever this ordinance, it seems that they would have too much discriminatory power. And even if the city prosecutor has the sole authority to take a recommendation from the administrator to trial, that administrator in that position would still have to investigate charges brought to their attention, which means likely that some of those charges are probably going to be frivolous and unable to be proved to the level required by the city prosecutor to proceed to trial. But yet, citizens being investigated would still have a real burden to defend themselves against such charges with the administrator. And then if it went to the prosecutor, then they'd have to continue that with the prosecutor. You know, I just don't understand the way this ordinance is written currently. I would rather see my tax money used instead for something that is necessary and would provide an immediate and daily positive effect, like add a position, instead of hiring an administrator, the civil rights administrator, hire another animal control officer. I mean, that would be a real benefit, in my mind, because, again, not because the LGBT community doesn't deserve protection or against discrimination, but it seems to me there already exists a system, that being the legal system, to address grievances and issues of discrimination. So, I just don't understand why this ordinance is necessary. It seems like it's legislating, trying to legislate for something that, from what I've observed, living in Fayetteville, I don't see that it's an issue in terms of, if it was, it seems like I'd be reading it in the newspaper or seeing it on news reports, and I just haven't. And it seems that this ordinance gives, since, in my opinion, it seems to legislate, is trying to legislate for a problem that doesn't seem to exist, then it seems to me that that gives the wrong impression about the city of Fayetteville. And I would think that the Chamber of Commerce, if no one else, would take exception to that. But I oppose this ordinance for those reasons, in terms of the personal property rights. Yes, businesses, public businesses and entities that receive grant money, I mean, they're held at a different standard than the private citizen. But if a private citizen who has invested their own money in real estate... invested their own money in real estate, it seems to me that they would be able to restrict tenants to whomever they wish, nonsmokers, smokers, people with children, whatever. So while I support the idea of protecting the minority, and certainly I do not advocate discrimination, the way this ordinance is currently written, I just have a lot of questions about how well it would serve Fayetteville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.